Good evening. The Executive Session of Wayne Ward Education Public Work Session, meeting of December 3rd, 2020. This meeting is in Anthony Wayne Middle School.
The Statement of Compliance and Study Board Finding was read with the requirements of the open public meetings that. And the roll call was taken. The meeting was recessed and is now being reconvened. Did something happen to the sound? Okay. Hmm? Good? Okay. Let's rise for up. I just lost the meeting. I don't know what happened. Okay. Sorry about that, folks. Had a little computer glitch. If we could all rise for a flag salute, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Can I get a mover to reconvene? Mrs. Albanese, Mr. Pavlak. Okay. This will start with you, Dr. Toback, if you're ready. Okay.
So, good evening. The Board of Education meeting is being held once again at Anthony Wayne Middle School. As has been the case through the pandemic, the meeting is open for public view and public participation using Zoom and is also broadcast on Channel 77. There's a number of newsworthy events from around the district. First of all, Wayne Valley High School and their annual food drive. This year was led by Wayne Valley High School nurses Anita Dispenziari and Suzanne Deutsch. It was a huge success. Due to COVID concerns, the format was changed from actual food items to donations of stored gift cards. The Wayne Valley High School National Honor Society, peer leaders, sports teams, staff, and PTO all came together with a huge and generous response. In the end, the students created handmade greeting cards and collected over $3,000 worth of gift cards. Large donation of gift cards was also given to the Wayne Interfaith Network Food Pantry. Ava Warner, a fifth grade student at Tunis Day Elementary, won a writing contest through the Roblox video game. Her story was published and incorporated into part of the Roblox Royal High Video Game. John F. Kennedy Elementary School, students continue to work together to create an inclusive environment for all while highlighting the power of literature. This year, the whole school is engaging in monthly read alouds that highlight key themes of inclusion, acceptance, diversity, empathy, and compassion, also looking through the lenses of race, religion, ability, families, et cetera. Each classroom receives a copy of the new book of the month, which is also highlighted in the school's Instagram account. Lessons, activities, and discussions are held in each classroom throughout the month. So far, the staff and students read and held discussions centered around the books. All are welcome, those shoes, and the day you begin with additional books and activities planned each month for the rest of the year. JFK is really proud of this monthly initiative and continues to embrace the beautiful uniqueness of its school community. Also, George Washington Middle School's 2020 Yearbook, Keep It On The Level, is featured in the showcase collection of yearbooks from middle schools across the United States and Canada. It is the only middle school yearbook from any schools in the Northeast to be included in the showcase. Your book was a proud collaboration led by library and media specialist and yearbook advisor Tara Cooper Weiss, administration, faculty, and the school community. We're excited to announce that building on the successful launch last year, our Unified Clubs and Sports Teams will be added furthermore to the elementary schools and our early childhood centers, starting as early as January 2021. This expansion, which is funded, will begin as a virtual after-school program for students to participate remotely. The club is officially organized with focus on fitness. However, the door is open to incorporate a variety of additional options as the program grows over time. The main goal of the Unified Club is to encourage student-driven work that is initiated by student-generated ideas. Special Olympics New Jersey has announced some exciting initiatives and changes to the program, the first of which is the development of the Youth Leadership Committee. This is a fully student-led committee where students will work together as an organizing team to come up with a vision, mission, agendas, and plans for the youth leadership meetings and youth leadership summits across the state. Wayne Township Public Schools were identified by Special Olympics New Jersey from a group of selected districts across the state to have our high school students take active roles on the Youth Leadership Committee. Following students have accepted nominations, participate in this capacity at Wayne Valley, Elliot Franklin, and Angelo Jincarelli, Wayne Hills Bryn O'Rourke, and Alexander Schmidt. Congratulations Elliot, Angelo, Bryn, Alexander. They're confident, enthusiastic, and eager to share what they learn while attending these meetings with district advisors and students. Finally, for fall athletics, there was certainly nothing common about our start to the fall athletic season, and many challenges were met and endured by our coaches, students, athletes, and families. Most of our fall athletic programs, football, sideline cheer, boys and girls cross-country, girls tennis, field hockey, boys and girls soccer, girls volleyball, and gymnastics were two of our programs that were postponed by the state to coincide with the requirement to limit, sorry, assembly and indoor facilities. All 10 programs started the summer open session in July. In Wayne fashion of ingenuity and perseverance, we adjusted and included outdoor tents for open locker rooms. The school each had our athletic training programs go completely mobile, moving weight facilities to our covered outdoor areas and fenced locations, and we also increased the rental facilities to accommodate further student and community needs. Special thanks to all of our fall coaches for keeping our programs moving, finding solutions to so many problems associated with the pandemic. All of our coaches went well above and beyond to make the season a success and continue to build upon a proud athletic tradition. So, that concludes that report. Would like to just go a little bit of out of order. With the HIV report, just very quickly, during this reporting period, there were two incidents reported as HIV. After thorough investigation, only one of those reported incidents was found to be an actual case of HIV. Okay. So, right now, Mrs. Reichman, would you mind talking a little bit about our school calendar for the upcoming school year?
Sure. The Education Committee met and reviewed a couple of...
Mrs. Kumar can't hear you. I can't hear you.
I can hear you.
Did you mute her, Dr. Bishard? Or can you unmute her? We're working on it, Mrs. Kumar, but we can't hear you either. You're on mute.
I know that. I was just saying she didn't have a mute on her screen. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me now? Yes. Okay. Sorry about that. Okay. I'll start again. At the last Education Committee meeting, we moved ahead with a proposed calendar for next year. This calendar has staff beginning on September 2nd and 3rd for their two in-service days. Students will begin on September 8th for the first day of school, and the last day of school will be June 23rd. So, we're out before the end of June, which is what we had hoped for, and we're bringing staff in after Labor Day, which is always desired. So, I think this was the best possible outcome, and it all seemed to work out to maintain the holidays that we currently have in our calendar that we wanted to continue with.
I'm sorry. Now I need to unmute. Are there any questions or discussion from the board on the calendar? Mr. Duffy?
I've actually got a chance to go over the calendar in detail, but I know that we have spoken about the virtual days come the snow days and how that would affect the, maybe the holiday break or spring break that we have every year. And if we intend on, in the past have used our holiday break to fulfill snow days, and I know there's a pending question in the public.
Do you want to respond to that with the most recent information about snow days and being able to use them? Or I can...
Ready? So, Mr. Duffy raises a very good point with regard to how snow days can be used and when they can be used. So, this is a calendar for next year. And so, during the pandemic, the state is allowing the use of snow days. If you go virtual on a snow day, it would count as a school day, right? This is for next year, so it's unclear whether those rules would apply. They do apply this year, but I don't know that that would be the case next year. Okay? Currently, the district's practice is essentially to add days. There's a list of three emergency days or four, four emergency days at the bottom of the calendar, and those days are spread out around the Memorial Day weekend. Okay? So, that's basically the tradition the district has followed for many years. So, ultimately, if we were able to use those days next year, so now it's more of a hypothetical discussion, but if we were able to use snow days as school days because we went virtual on those days, then we would ultimately, we would wind up picking up more days in May. So, really, is there, like, if you have, is there something like a scenario you wanted to discuss or...
No, just for the public, I know that there's a question.
Who's raised?
Yeah. I know that that was a question out in the public of, you know, in the past, there's been, if we had used more days than we had allotted.
Yes.
That there was the issue with going into the spring break.
Yes.
And families had plans.
Yeah.
You know, we're going to school early on and whatnot. Now that the state has allowed us, and I know it's for this year, and just looking for the public insight to see if that would carry on or not.
So, it would be unlikely that the spring break would be affected. This year, there's less likelihood of that happening because of the option to have virtual days. So, I mean, who knows what, you know, there could be some type of emergencies that are unforeseen that we don't know about, but it makes it much less likely that that would be something that would have to occur because of, you know, an excessive number of days. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have that problem this year.
Okay. Thank you.
Mrs. Albanese?
Regarding next year's calendar, I did have a question. The Monday that is Labor Day, and then there's Tuesday and Wednesday. I was asking the question myself, so some other people may have a question. That's a religious holiday. That's why you're looking to start school on Thursday. I wasn't aware myself of the scheduling of the date, so there may be other people who had that same question.
It's a very lead start.
Right.
Okay. Anyone else? Thank you, Mrs. Reichman. Moving on.
Okay. So, then, Dr. Bishard, if you could, please pull up the presentation for the COVID-19 update. Let me just make sure. So, what we'd like to do is we would like to provide the Board of Ed and the community with an update on the impact that COVID-19 is having on our school system. And so, Dr. Bishard, if you can go to the next page. So, this chart was the same chart that was shared with the Board of Education when we left off at our last meeting on November 19th. And so, you can see the numbers there. You can see there's a substantial number of students, there's a substantial number of staff members that have tested positive or are quarantining during that time period. Okay? So, that was a cumulative chart. And if you go to the next slide, please, this was the COVID-19 activity level as reported by the New Jersey Department of Health. And you can see at that time, other than the very southern counties of the state, all of the other counties, including Passaic County, were identified as high-risk areas. Move to the next chart. Okay. So, now, as of December 3rd, you can see that there is an even larger leap in terms of our total numbers. Okay? So, to the extent where you see that there's 375 students, but those are cumulative numbers, right, from October, the number of positive students, the number of staff members quarantining, and the number of staff members positive. So, again, that's cumulative back to October 26th. Those are big numbers. I'm sure that it's also upsetting to many people to realize there's that many different students or staff members that have been affected, and of course, the families are also affected by, you know, COVID in the community. So, we also have the latest COVID-19 activity report from the New Jersey Department of Health. So, this was distributed across the state today, and now you can see that the entire state of New Jersey is considered high-risk. So, our situation has not changed in the last few weeks. We remain high-risk. Obviously, there's a progression, right? And so, when your area is considered a high-risk, the guidance from the Department of Education is that you should consider virtual instruction, but you are able to remain closed. If we move on to the next phase where we become a very high-risk area, at that point, the recommendation is to close schools and to go virtual until conditions improve. Okay? So, what we'd like to do is then move on. So, in the prior charts, you saw some very large numbers. And so, that is, of course, cause for concern, but part of the presentation tonight is to also help understand what we'll be facing. So, ultimately, we've been on during this high-risk period after a holiday, after Thanksgiving, we're now in a situation where we have to return to school. Okay? So, what is our situation like now? Because there's a benefit. There's a benefit in having this time off because students that were affected by COVID, either as quarantine or staff members that were in quarantine or had tested positive, now time goes by, and now a lot of people that were not able to be in school are now able to come back, although there's another group that goes out. So, what we're looking at right here is the staff and students positive and quarantining, what we expect to see on December 7th when we return to school. And you can see that those numbers are definitely more manageable than the other numbers that you saw. But you also see something that I think is significant in that when it comes to quarantining staff and positive staff, that's a lot of people. Fifty-two staff members that will be quarantining and another 18 that are positive, okay, that will not be in the mix. So, again, with all the other situations that the district has to address when it comes to substitutes and covering people and providing, you know, services despite the fact that staff members are out, that is a big number. Dr. Bishard, if you can go to the next slide? So, one of the things I wanted to talk about tonight is the help from the community. And so, the community has been helpful in a lot of different ways. Parents have been very helpful during this entire pandemic. But one thing that people can do is help us with these health screenings. So, what we'd like to do is just talk about our school nurses. They have done a marvelous job. They really, they go beyond the call of duty. Sometimes you see they're emailing and they're notifying the administration at 4:00 in the morning about different cases or things they've learned about and late at night or text messages and things like that. So, they really have gone so far above and beyond the call of duty. So, they have a lot of responsibilities. I mean, with the virus spreading around, I mean, they're talking to staff members, they're talking to parents, they're talking, they're dealing with students that still come to their office, they're still dealing with medication that has to be distributed. But one of the things that you see, even though the situation has improved a little bit, is that they also spend a lot of time addressing situations where students have not completed or parents have not completed health screenings. And you can see when you add that together, ultimately, those students are not allowed in the mix. So, the administration and the school nurses are the ones that are basically dealing with these issues, and they already have so many other things to deal with. So, when you add that up, that's a substantial amount of time that is spent for people who don't have time to give for this purpose. So, again, if parents, if you could, if you could just make sure, please complete those health screenings before, well before your child comes to school, because it has gotten to the point where that is, it is becoming a detriment for the nurses and the administrators to be able to do their jobs because they spend so much time tracking down students who don't have their health screening completed. Dr. Bishard, the next slide. So, a little statement about Wayne Valley. So, and you saw from our tables before that Wayne Valley had a significant number of students and staff members that have been affected by COVID. And so, this was really a special area of consideration for the district. During the prior week, we've been working hard to determine what to do with the situation with Wayne Valley. So, we were able to meet with our Department of Health today, and in the end, as you can see here, there was a number of cases across multiple cohorts and activities. And at this point, our local Wayne Health Department moved along the information that they collected to the state because they are looking for them to make a determination about whether this was officially an outbreak, that we have an outbreak. But the Wayne Health Department said even if it's not officially classified as an outbreak, the number of cases that we had at Wayne Valley, they are saying that we do show sustained community transmission, which is an issue that we really have to be very concerned about. There's a number of cases, and there's a number of additional cases that were reported today. This morning, there were three. This afternoon, there was another six at Wayne Valley, right? So, just in one day, there was another nine cases. So, that's something that bears consideration as we come up with a response to all of this. Okay? Dr. Bishard, next slide, please. Okay. So, in this slide, you can see that there is a little bit of a new information that we have. Of course, you've probably read about the change with the CDC guidance and the changes in the reduction of number of days, of days that are needed for quarantine. So, you can see here that ultimately, that guidance may or may not come into play in New Jersey. Ultimately, those rules have to be adopted here in New Jersey, and that hasn't happened yet, but it may, and that will definitely help us. Okay? That would definitely help us in terms of staff coming back, students coming back. It does create some other problems because a lot of times, people who have COVID don't start to, they don't exhibit signs that they've contracted COVID until seven days into their exposure. So, that does create some other concerns. The other thing that we've done is in order to address our sub situation, we'll talk a little bit more, is we have a recommendation to increase our subpay to $150 a day, which would make us competitive with what some of their districts are doing. The districts that are running in-person classes are desperate for subs, and they've raised their rates to try to attract subs. So, we're recommending a rate a little higher than what we've been paying now. You can see we pay $100 for just, for employees that just have a sub certificate or 110 if they're certified teachers working as subs. So, those are the rates we're recommending. That goes to 150. That also includes our permanent subs. And we're also looking for other creative solutions, finding ways to get sub certificates in the hands of some of our other employees that may be eligible or may be closed. So, we're looking everywhere to try to find some additional subs for the district. If you can go to the next page? Okay. So, this table is really, it's meant to show the type of challenge that ultimately we face on any given day. Okay? So, when we return to school on the 7th of December, you can see now the number of staff members who, for medical reasons or other reasons, are receiving 504 accommodations has gone up. So, we're now at 64 staff members that have been granted those accommodations. So, they are not in the mix every day. In many cases, they're teaching virtually, as you could see. And, but the bottom line is if they're teaching virtually, you still have to have someone in the classroom with the students. Okay? So, that's a lot of, that's a lot of different people that you have to find, either by paying for coverages or substitutes. You still have 22 staff members on leave, although, being honest about it, many of those are covered by long-term replacements. So, we do have replacements, but still shows you just, you know, how many people are in the mix that are not our regular employees at this point. Our daily average absence, so on any given day, there will be approximately 34 employees across the district that are absent. We have 18 staff members that are obviously not going to be here. We have 52 staff members that are quarantining. So, that adds up to about 190 different people on every given day. Now, like I said, you could subtract out the long-term replacements, the 22 there for the staff on leave, but still, that's a substantial number. And the total substitutes that we have potentially available is only 262. And that's assuming, that's assuming they don't decide to go work in under the district. So, in other words, there's 262 that are available to us, but it doesn't mean every one of them is going to come to Wayne. It doesn't mean half of them are going to come to Wayne. And that's where our problem is. Even if we got all of them to come to Wayne, you know, we still have, we still have our share of problems when it comes to covering. If we were able to get all of them to come on every given day, then we probably would be okay, but that's not the case. We have a lot of them that wind up going elsewhere. Okay? So, if we can go, move on. Right? Wanted to provide the board with information about what we see as our staff in hotspots, the schools that are really struggling. And so, you can see the different schools that we have that are in a situation, what we've, we gave those, those schools kind of the color red because those are really the ones that require the greatest warning. These are schools that, after surveying the principals this week, we've determined that ultimately, they are already in a situation where they are unable to cover the number of people that they will have absent. Okay? So, they've already determined going into next week, they can't cover all the people that are out of their buildings. Okay? And there's different reasons. I mean, it doesn't necessarily mean some people have other issues that they're dealing with. They know about absences, you know, for different reasons that staff members are planning. And then there's the unknown. One of the big problems is the fact that if during a pandemic, anyone calls and says, listen, I'm not feeling well, the guidance is always, well, if you don't feel well, then please stay home. And that's what we've been following. So, that creates more of a problem, though. You understand, like, no, in general, no one comes to school if they're, you know, not feeling well. They just don't. People have been very responsible about that, but it creates more vacancies than we have. So, we really are having a hard time. So, they're starting, coming back next week, knowing they can't cover. Now, what does the district do in those situations? Okay? And what kind of problems does that create? It creates a situation where, in the end, the administration has to come up with a way. And what we've been doing, although we don't like to do it, is we combine classes. We combine classes into larger spaces. But I will say that one of the problems with the elementary schools is that when you combine classes, so what large space does any elementary school have? They have a cafeteria, that's also a gym, more than likely. Sometimes they're separate. But the fact is, those are also our snack locations. Those are where the students go to eat during the colder weather. Now that it's colder, everyone, you know, we try to keep the students indoors. They do go outside. They used to be able to go outside for snack. Now, they have to be indoors. So, you understand that that's, that's something that's less than ideal if you have the students in there for snack, and you also have other students in there. So, we try, you know, obviously, the social distancing is the thing we have to maintain, but it is a less-than-ideal situation. Okay? If you can go to the next slide, Dr. Bishard? Okay. So, this is a slide that we did not expect. Transportation. And you see that 12 of our drivers and seven transportation pairs are out due to COVID or long-term medical leave. So, the fact is that we are fortunate as a district in that we have a number of students that attend private schools for the disabled. And so, those schools have closed for in-person instruction. They're now all virtual. And so, because those drivers are now available, we're able to cover these absences that have recently emerged. The problem is that right now, we have every person that we can, we have available to us who will be working, and we do, we have no backup. So, what that means is in the coming weeks, there could be situations where there are delays with our buses. It could be situations where there's a loss of transportation services for a day or two. There could be unexpected closings of, you know, different routes and things like that that ultimately, we don't have a choice because we don't have enough drivers. Okay? So, like I said, we're okay, we can get by, but that's assuming no one else is sick, and that's assuming someone doesn't have just a head cold or some other thing that's normal at this point in the year. Okay? So, our transportation situation is definitely an area of concern for the district. Okay? This list is a school, I'm sorry, this is a list of schools that have significant daily staffing problems, so they are able to cover, they have been able to cover, but in some cases, it's at, it's very difficult to do. So, there have been many days when both of our high schools, but especially at Wayne Hills, they've had situations where they cover on a regular basis 10 to 12 teachers, which doesn't seem like a lot, but when you add that together, covering 12 people where you have no subs is a very difficult thing. And honestly, it's also a very expensive thing because we're paying other staff members to cover those classes, which means we pay them the per-period coverage rate. When you add that together, and you have 12 people or 12, 12 teachers, just say hypothetically, we'll make it simple, 10 teachers, each teaches, say, four periods, five periods, depending on what you can cover and what you can combine, but say you have to pay 40 or 50 coverages on any given day, that's a substantial amount of money the district has to lay out to cover for those classes. And then, we have a list of schools, which is good news, right? We do have some schools at this point that have not had problems, that are able to and are doing well with their coverages for different reasons. Some of our schools are doing okay, okay? At least for the time being, and so hopefully, it holds in the future. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Okay. So what we have here is basically guidance from the New Jersey Department of Health. So if you've been watching the news lately, if you've been paying attention to what's happening, you know, through the media, ultimately, there are many schools that are in a situation where whole districts have closed. And so we're seeing that happening more and more because as COVID expands and situations are created, districts struggle and they face some of the same problems we have. And so here you can see basically the guidance that we have from the state on closure. When should a school system consider closing a school or a school system? So that's here, that comes from the New Jersey Department of Health. And you can see the highlighting that's there is not highlighting that I did. That's highlighting that came from the Department of Health because they wanted to illustrate what new guidance they were giving based on an update from November 19th of this year. So you could see the one change is that whether all close contacts of cases can be identified and excluded from school. So in other words, you have to determine if you can, if you lose your ability to contact trace. And we've had some cases this year, we've lost our ability to contact trace. We've had to close. Now that's included officially in the advice. In other words, it better be safe, it's better to be safe than sorry, right? If you can't, if you can't really pin down exposure. Okay, the next slide, please. So this also comes from the New Jersey Department of Health. And this is a summary of scenarios that school districts typically face. So and as you saw on the prior page, it's not meant as absolute guidance. But what it is, is it's guidance meant to inform how school districts respond to different scenarios. And what I would like to mention is that as the school year started and as we started to see cases in our schools, we were basically in a situation where we were seeing the first three scenarios or so. We would see one student who has the virus or there's an exposure, there are some small-scale things. Now we're in a situation where we're really getting to the final two scenarios. Finals two, where you have significant numbers of student and staff members and families who are served by the school community that are somehow being affected by COVID. And then you also have the other issue of different cases that are existing in a school that are not connected. In other words, these are people that it just shows that they're spread in the community. That's essentially where we are in most of our cases now, particularly our high schools. We're getting to that point where we're really, we're we're pretty far along on the continuum. So at this point, if we can go to the next slide. So administration has been working very hard this week to look at where we are and what we can do. And as you can see, there are a number of schools where we're okay. There's a number of schools that are struggling, that are basically on that list of schools that are yellow when it comes to staffing. You also see that there's also a number of schools that are having a significant number of cases, right? Wayne Valley is, is really the primary example in this school district where you have a substantial number of students that are positive with COVID or quarantining. And at this point, parents have also expressed their concern, I believe, by having your students go virtual. So just this week, we had another 34 students that decided to go virtual. And so we're now at the point where about 50% of the student population at Wayne Valley is virtual. We're recommending at this point that Wayne Valley remains virtual based on all the different things that have been happening and based on the fact that we were faced with a number of additional new cases today. The contact tracing that's necessary for that is just, you know, when you think about all the different ways people will contact with one another outside of school, because now the school has been closed. We don't know where students were any particular day, don't know who they were with, things like that. So it would almost be impossible to contact trace, even if we wanted to. We probably wouldn't get to a point where we could do that. And the amount of time that would be required would be extraordinary. We also see that there are many parents, we know that there are many students who benefit greatly by having the ability to go to school and receive instruction in person. And that's been something the board has pushed very hard this year. It's something that the board has been very committed to. And we've made, I believe, an extraordinary effort to maintain in-person instruction. But the numbers are heading in the wrong direction. And so, like, for example, if we were to see another increase next week, similar to what we saw this week, if we were to see those kinds of numbers, then we really have to rethink what we're doing. But for now, I think that our administrative recommendation is to stick with the plan we have. Our plan is very flexible. We have cohorts, we have different things that we can do to be as flexible as we can and still maintain in-person instruction. Although I also believe that if there is a situation where we have to close a school, then it should be something that we do until January 19th. So in other words, the schools that are closed during this brief time period in December before the holidays, if they do wind up being closed, it would probably make more sense and the greater good would be served by keeping that school closed until we return in January 19th. Another thing that we should do is we should prepare for what we consider substantial disruption to the school day. Understanding that in some cases, if we can't cover and if we have to combine classes at some of our schools, it will not be possible to deliver meaningful instruction. It would be very difficult to do that. There might be situations, as I talked about with transportation, where we can't cover that. We also have another issue that we're concerned with. And something that we have to really watch is the situation with our custodians. Quite a few custodians that we have working in the district have contracted COVID and they've reported this week. Okay, so what does that mean for us? It means for us that ultimately as a district, we have a standard to maintain when it comes to cleaning. We want to make sure all students and staff are safe and healthy. And so the cleaning that we've had in the district has been a big part of that. I think that everyone would agree, our buildings have been spotless and the students have done a wonderful job. But now we're getting to a point where if we lose a number of them, we don't have substitutes for them. We have no one else to come in. We cannot keep a school open unless we know that we are maintaining the level of cleanliness that we need to. Because ultimately, we are still attending, we still have schools open during a pandemic. And we have that obligation, we must make sure that our schools are clean. So, but the idea is that schools that are open, all the other schools besides Wayne Valley, our recommendation is to consider them day-to-day. Right? We really don't know. We cannot say for sure that on any given day, if we had to predict, you know, could we say for 100% certainty that our, all our schools, with the exception of Wayne Valley, that our schools will be open on Monday of next week on December 7th? The answer is no. We could get a huge influx of cases tomorrow. There's a number of cases that were reported today. And so we do have to be very concerned about that. So even though we have a plan now, what we've said many times before, you know, the situation's really fluid, changes every day. And so it's really hard to say for sure what will happen in the coming days. We don't know, but we're prepared for it. We have plans for just about everything and we know, you said, we have that flexibility. And the other thing is to prepare for remote instruction. And so I know that we've been talking to our principals, we've been talking to our teachers, we've sent them emails about. Start to think about what you might need to do if we go fully remote at your school, right? What would you need to do? What are the types of things that have to happen? So I think everybody who works in the district is aware that this is a possibility. And everyone is prepared to go to fully remote instruction at each one of our schools if necessary. So I believe that we can hold on for longer. I know that our, our students in our special needs programs are very dependent on those programs. It's very important for those programs to continue. I know that there's a number of other students that ultimately benefit greatly. The social benefit of being in school, the, I mean, it's obviously a difficult time for our students to be in school. Staff members have been doing really just an unbelievable job. And they continue to come to work every day, do the best they can. But it is not easy. It's not easy, you know, when you're talking about, you know, a situation where staff members are involved in the hybrid instruction. It's not easy to instruct a number of students in a classroom in person and also instruct them at home. So like I said, we've been, we've been fighting a very good fight. We'll continue to do that. These are our recommendations and obviously we probably should open up for board discussion if the board would like to have a discussion.
Thank you for that very substantive report, Dr. Tobek. Does anyone have any questions? Mr. Baba.
I just have one. Out of the 52 teachers that are quarantining, when did they come off of quarantine?
It depends. So that what we're seeing is what we expect on the 7th. But again, those that come off will more than likely be replaced by more that come on the quarantine list. And based on the numbers that we have, that number will probably increase.
Anyone else? I have a question. The sub increase, do you want to vote on that tonight or in January?
No, we'd like to vote on that tonight.
So we would have to add that to the agenda?
It's on the agenda.
Oh, was it? Yeah, I'm sorry.
Yep.
I don't recall seeing it when I reviewed. Okay. Mrs. Kumar.
Um, just a general question. And I know that this was a discussion that was had. When we talk about contact tracing, could you just clarify that at the end of the day, how it works and who is and is not doing the contact tracing? So everyone gets an idea of what's going on behind the scenes, as far as that goes.
So so right now, contact tracing is something that the community, as far as our Wayne Health Department, they've made it very clear that they are kind of at the end of their capacity to contact trace. They are involved in contact tracing, they do the best they can. There's also a lot of frustration that they experience because in many cases, you know, people aren't as honest as they should be when they receive phone calls. In other cases, people just hang up. So the vast majority of people, I know that Governor Murphy also reported the other day that statewide, 70% of the people that receive a call for contact tracing are not cooperative in some way or another. They are not cooperative. So I'm not sure what the statistic is here in Wayne, but there is a big problem with that. But even with that, as you said, I guess there's some very quick phone calls. But our township has made it clear that they're, they're really at the limit of what they can do. So what does that mean for us? It means for us that we're, for the most part, on our own as a school district. So we do our contact tracing. So what happens is depending on the circumstances and depending on the school and, you know, ultimately, the nurses are involved in working with our teachers to try to make determinations about students and what the proximity was to a student that might have tested positive. And they do the best they can. Again, when you think about that, the nurses are out there, the teachers are out there. And it's also very hard to necessarily attest that students were this far apart or, you know, things like that because it's something they're reconstructing in their minds after a class. So generally speaking, the structure of the schools, it's always conducive, the way classrooms are set up, they're always conducive to social distancing. But it's not always clear. And there's also situations where students in hallways, you know, different things during, during lunch or after school, right after school, students are together. So it's really, it's very difficult to pull that all together. And like I said, in many cases, we're, we're also beyond our capacity at times to do the contact tracing. So that is, that is an enormous challenge. And that is an enormous challenge for every school district that's still continuing with in-person instruction. That that contact tracing is getting to a point where it's, it's hard to keep going.
Mrs. Alvenes.
Uh, Dr. Tobek, I think that you've laid out the situation that the district faces clearly, concisely for people to understand. I think that you've taken the direction from the board that, you know, we want to do everything we can to keep our students in school, to keep in-person education. And I understand staffing, I understand coverage for students. My question really is about notification. People rely on schedules, they rely on what tomorrow's going to bring, what this week is going to bring. So while I understand that sometimes things happen, we have, whether we don't have coverage or we have an outbreak, my question really is how will parents, how will staff members be notified in a day-to-day situation of what tomorrow might bring, what the week might bring? How does that look for a parent who's trying to plan for their week because they work and their student is supposed to go to school, whether it's a high school cohort or an elementary or middle half week? How will we notify people and what type of leeway are they going to get in the notification process?
Okay, so the difficult part and the part of the answer that I'm sure will not be viewed favorably is that on any given morning, a number of people will call in. And so we find out who's actually calling out sick. Now, under the circumstances, I could say, like, the teachers have been wonderfully responsible in notifying principals in advance if they're going to be absent. They've done a really good job this week of notifying principals if they may not be able to be in, just so we can prepare for next week. However, it might be a situation as simple as, okay, we got hit hard one day at one of our elementary schools where six staff members are experiencing, they have symptoms or they, they don't feel well or whatever. And so you have six people out on top of, you already know, you can't cover four or five classes. So you would have like 10 classes that would be uncovered. We think, like I said, our, our schools are safe, but they're safe when they're properly staffed. So that would be a morning call. It would be just like any other situation where, say, there's a snowstorm or some other event that a school can't open, a water main break. And we have to make a call early in the morning to notify students and staff members that the school would not be open. So we have our emergency notification system. We did a test a few weeks ago to make sure it's up and running. And so that's what we do. So staff members and parents would receive text messages, they would see, receive the robo-calls. And so we would do everything we can to update parents. But there might be cases where there's a lot of inconvenience involved in continuing like this.
Anyone else? Thank you, Dr. Oh. You got another one? Just one more? Go ahead.
Yeah, so I, obviously with all the cases and everything else going on, you know, we're trying our best to stay open as best we can. But as we continue to look forward to this, this is just something I want to keep in mind and mention. Really, in my opinion, and the data suggests that we really need to focus. And it looks like too, within our cases, we haven't seen as many cases at the ECC or at any of the elementary schools, just remembering that those young children who really can't learn virtually and those students who have IEPs and 504s, we, I just want to make sure, like, we're just making sure we prioritize those students because the minute you don't learn how to read by third grade, the dropout rate just increases so much. So as we look forward, I just, it's just something, I know that board members have said it just as a thing to keep in mind as we're looking at all, all of this information, we're not happy to see, basically. That's it.
Mrs. Kumar. Okay, does that conclude your presentation and recommendation, Dr. Tobek?
Yes, because I think everybody's had enough at this point, so yes.
I'm done. Okay. Unfortunately, it's, it's a lot of bad news. Is my mic not working? Can you hear me? Okay. Let's move on to you, Mr. Moffett, with revisions to the agenda.
Yes, this is a public work session. So the first section of the agenda is on the emergent section, we are adding one tonight. And I'll read that in, it'll be under the T, Emergent Human Resource item. And that reads as follows, Approval of Examination for Cause and Administrative Leave. Whereas the employee ID number 8704 is employed by the Wayne Township Board of Education. And whereas, based upon information provided by the administration and the judgment of the board, the employee has exhibited evidence of a deviation from normal physical or mental health, which has adversely affected the employee's ability to perform essential job functions. And whereas, as a result of the foregoing, the board desires to direct the employee to submit to a physical and psychiatric and/or psychological examination pursuant to NJSA 18A 6-2 and NJAC 6A colon 32-6 dot 3 and Board of Education Policy 3161. Now therefore be it resolved, upon the recommendation of the Superintendent of Schools, employee ID number 8704 is hereby required and directed to submit to a physical examination by the school district's designated physician and a written medical report detailing the results of such examination is to be provided confidentially to the Board of Education. And be it further resolved, employee ID number 8704 is further required to, and directed to submit to a psychiatric examination and/or a physical examination as a board may hereafter designate. And a written report detailing the result of such examination is to be provided confidentially to the board within 30 days of the date, December 3, 2020. is to be provided confidentially to the board within 30 days of the date, December 3, 2020. And be it further resolved that the superintendent of schools is hereby authorized and directed to prepare and provide the employee with appropriate statutory notice of the board's action and the reasons therefore, and be it further resolved that the employee has been placed on administrative leave with pay pending completion of these examinations and/or further board action. That concludes the revisions to tonight's agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on agenda items only. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Albanese. Okay. You're on.
Hi, Art Dardia, 87 Poplar Road. Just a couple of questions. First, thank you for the COVID-19 update. I think it was enlightening. But given that, I do have a couple of questions that I think you might want to consider. One, I'm wondering if the district has begun discussions internally with state education leaders or with their own contracted doctor on whether or not vaccination against SARS-CoV-2 will be required for an eventual return to school for students, but also made a requirement for teachers and staff. Given the statistics, you can clearly see that positive cases aren't limited to just students. The immunization policy that's already being amended as part of today's public agenda should service for students, but I'm curious how you would implement something around staff? Does that become a job requirement? What is the path or the groundwork that the administration needs to lay in order to protect our students and to ensure vaccinations are carried out district-wide? Two. Given the message around preparing for substantial disruption and to prepare for remote instruction, a couple of items. One, has the administration considered which staff might be furloughed and under what conditions in order to be budget conscious in a scenario where we go full remote for an extended period of time? Given all of your committee meeting minutes around needs in the district, around things as basic as building generators that we don't have, requiring us to pay for fire watch and reduction in state aid, we definitely have a lot of budget holes that might need tending to. Around preparing for more remote instruction Wednesdays, I was pleased to see additional live instruction this week, but I have to say the rollout was a little flawed. Teachers aren't required to hold office hours on the day. And when the principal said that it is both a Wellness Wednesday and a regular virtual day, a day in which teachers do not have office hours, like on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, doesn't seem like a regular day. Clarification from the district would be helpful. It begs the question, three months into the year, why Wednesdays are different than any other day of the week? At this point, I would hope that we'd be able to get full instruction. Furthermore, I wonder if the board is considering moving away from minimal days to full days in order to ensure maximal instruction time for our students as we've gotten more equipped and used to remote instruction? Thank you for your time.
Okay. Next caller.
Alan Tempesku, 41 Gibbs. I have three questions regarding vaccinations like the previous call. I'd like to find out if there's some sort of a policy when people return to school, once the vaccinations are available, not only students, teachers, visitors to the school. Secondly, concerning the school calendar, Mr. Duffy just added about snow days, and I'd like to follow up. At the last meeting, I had asked about snow days for this winter, and Dr. Tobek had clarified that the New Jersey Department of Education confirmed the district can have school virtual on snow days and that it would still count in the 180-day requirement. But Dr. Tobek also clarified that it can be virtual, providing, I think he said, no power outages or extensive power outages in the area. So once the pandemic is over and we are into the 2021 to 2022 calendar, would the New Jersey Department of Education still allow snow days to be virtual when there is no pandemic? So I guess what I'm asking Dr. Tobek, if the Department of Education guidance of allowing virtual snow days is only as a one-time thing during a pandemic? And my third point, with regard to remote instruction, this week there was a technical mishap whereby links to Google classrooms were missing. Possibly Dr. Tobek can comment on what is being done so that this does not happen again? Can the links be sent separately ahead of time via email to students as a backup? So if it is missing on the Google Classroom page, students can still have it so that they can log on to their classrooms without interruption, as happened this week? So my three questions, and I prefer Dr. Tobek, if you could answer them at some point. Vaccinations. Second was about the snow days and whether it's one time. And the third is about the technical mishap. Thank you.
Seeing no one else? Sorry. Somebody popped up.
Hi, Jenny Franklin, 21 Keelana Drive. I just have a couple of questions I think I would need to have clarified. When you talk about Dr. Tobek, the staff needing to be covered, I'm assuming that when we're talking about staff who are positive or quarantining, we're only talking about teaching positions that, and that non-teaching positions are not included in that? Also, what, I was wondering what process is in place to review why so many staff are quarantining? Are they quarantining because they have a positive test result in their home? Are they feeling that they were exposed somewhere and therefore they're quarantining? I'm wondering what the criteria is for that? And also, just basic, have we confirmed that there is transmission in school? And that teachers are infecting students or students are infecting teachers? Have we actually come to that conclusion? Or is this all just outside-of-school transmission for both staff and students? That's it. Thank you.
Now seeing no one.
I'd move to close.
Mr. Stuck, Mr. Pavlak, Mr. Duffy. Okay, moving on. We had committees that met. Mrs. Puttup. You go first. You're on mute. There we go. Is that good? Can you hear me? Okay. All right, the educational committee met today at 5:00 PM. In attendance were Stacy Share, Don Kumar, myself, and our administrative liaison, Donna Reichman. Basically, we reviewed the agenda of November 12th. We went over our new agenda for today. We previewed the nursing services plan, which the district puts into place every year. And we also had to meet via Zoom, our new supervisor of health services, Maggie Landowski. We reviewed the updated curriculum for secondary AP Studio Art and an update on school counseling for grade nine only, having to do with career readiness and social emotional health. We had a mid-year update on student progress that was very comprehensive and given to us by Donna Reichman. Many notes as to how the school district has been functioning and good things that have taken place even in light of the current pandemic. And it was a very productive meeting. Thank you. I also have notes from a policy committee meeting that met this afternoon at 1:00 PM. In attendance from the board were Mrs. Kumar and myself. And we also had Mrs. Reichman in attendance, Mr. Moffett, our business administrator, and Mr. Matt Mignelli, who is our new secondary director. We went through seven revised policies, and those come to us from the state of New Jersey. Four regulations and one new policy. And they covered the gamut from electronic fund transfers and claimant certifications, which is why Mr. Moffett was there, and property inventory. And. Mr. Mignelli was very helpful regarding school attendance procedures. And I made a note here. There is going to be some communication going out to parents. Apparently, students are, when they're learning virtually, can be marked absent, attended virtually. But the student is not counted as absent for the day. It's a bookkeeping detail because if there is a fire drill or evacuation at the school, they need to know which students are in the school building. So if your student is logged on virtually for that day, they are still getting credit for it. Thank you. That's the end of my report. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Puttup. Mrs. Albanese?
Thank you, Mrs. Kazan. The finance committee met tonight at 5 o'clock here at Anthony Wayne School. Board members in attendance, Eileen Albanese, Matt Giordano, and Catherine Kazan. Our administrators in attendance were our business administrator, Mr. Moffett, as well as the assistant business administrator, Ms. Leitig. We reviewed agenda items for tonight's meeting. We reviewed 2020, 2021 student contracts. We reviewed the tuition schedule for students that are being received by the district. And we were, we reviewed the employee position control roster, which is something required by the business office to produce. We had no transfers tonight. We got an update on the 2020, 2021 budget update. Kindergarten, full-day kindergarten will obviously be the big focus for next year. The budget process is starting both within the individual schools and for facilities. The board members this year will again have a virtual binder, which as soon as some of these things start being put into place, Mr. Moffett will be loading into that virtual binder. Another item for consideration for payroll costs will be, we have four units up for negotiation for next year. So that's our budget update. We also have had a discussion about the state health plan for teachers and adding an additional open enrollment plan, date, I'm sorry, for the plan. And looking at the number of teachers that are going to opt into that plan. More information to come to the board. We were given an update on the annual audit. It looks like, not that I want to be revealing the news all myself, but it looks like we will be getting an audit report with no findings. So if that does come to be the case, much congratulations to Mr. Moffett and Ms. Leitig, and the members of the business office for doing such a wonderful job. And they had their exit conference today, and that's our anticipation. The Perkins Audit is updated, the Perkins Audit is ongoing. We received an update on that, and that is still in the process. We started, we had a beginning discussion for next year's budget. And the other item up for discussion, which I think will be an item for a while for this committee, is the state of our unemployment situation. And we're receiving some help from the organization that our business administrator belongs to. We're working on disputes, and I think that's something that we'll be looking at for a while to come in the district. There is a position that's opening up for an accounts payable clerk in the business office that will be for upward mobility for another employee, and that's something that will be posted for application shortly. And that's our report for tonight.
Thank you, Mrs. Albanese. Mr. Duffy?
Thank you, Madam President. Today, the Technology Safety Committee met. And the attendance was myself, Mr. Burchard, Mr. Baba, and Mr. Pavlak. Some of the topics we went over were staffing needs, instructional technology trainings, and Google Meet. One of the things that I can answer some of the questions to the public were, with the Google Meet, yes, we did have an issue with it the last few days. The issue was that the Google Meet had a server failure and a data mismatch that should be up and working tomorrow, and the issue should be fixed over Christmas break. And that would be all I have to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Duffy. Okay. I believe that's it. Anyone else for committee reports? No? Very good. Okay, ready to move the agenda items? Would like to make a motion. Mr. Pavlak?
I'm sorry. I would move the entire agenda.
Okay. Can I get a second? Mrs. Share? Any discussion? Okay, roll call. Mr. Moffett?
Consent agenda for items, emergent items R through V. Mrs. Albanese?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Duffy?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Kumar?
Yes.
Mrs.
Yes, in all abstain on emergent item S, S number seven.
S number seven?
Yes. Yes.
Mrs. Kazan?
Yes. Thank you. And at this time, I'd like to congratulate our new Skylar Colfax Middle School principal, Heather Weinstein. Congratulations and welcome to your new position. Okay, second public portion. This portion of the meeting is open to citizens for comment on any topic. Residents are to state their names, addresses, and subject matter. Comments may be limited to five minutes per person. Members of the public are discouraged from speaking negatively about an employee or a student. The board bears no responsibility for comments made by the public. Comments regarding employees or students cannot be legally responded to by the board. Other comments may be responded to tonight or at subsequent meetings under old business. Can I get a mover? Mr. Giordano, Mrs. Share? Okay. I see a hand. You're on.
Oh, yes. Art Dardia, 87 Poplar Road. I just have a question for the technology committee members. It was reported to me this morning by Dr. Burchard himself that, at the time, it wasn't believed to be a Google Meet failure. Instead, he said, quote, "The district has automated tasks in place to create accounts and provide staff and students certain permissions. One of the automated tasks did not run as expected, and some staff and students were not provided access to Meet. My team is working with our partners at Google to address the issue." Now, I'm not clear if these automated tasks failed to run because of a Google server issue or if it was because of our own integration in the district. Clarification there would be helpful. In the event that it was a Google Meet issue, I don't know if the district pays for these services, but a server outage like this would typically be in a breach of a vendor or service provider's SLI or service level indicator. The district might be able to recoup a service credit to, you know, apply to our fee if we pay for service. I'm curious if the district is going to seek one or if the issue really is not Google's issue at all, but one of the districts. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller? Hello? You need to unmute?
Hi, my name is Lovely Madar, 23 Bullen Zav. So I'm a student at Wayne Valley. First of all, I just want to say that, you know, it would have been nice to have a thorough it would have been nice to have a thorough update on your diversity promise today, but that's okay. I'll be addressing it anyway. So, you know, it's becoming obvious that our nation is becoming more increasingly aware of the injustices, discrimination and insensitivity towards minority groups. And I think it's time as a community, as a school system, as a town to realize that we're not an exception to that racism, to those hate instances. So many students go through discrimination, whether it's returning to race, color, national origin, religion, gender, gender identity, sexual orientation or disability and are scared of speaking up because they know that their case will be dismissed. It has happened to me. It's happened to my siblings. It's happened to my friends. For example, this is what my guidance counselor told me, quote for quote. She said, "Lovely, you can't be crying." That's what she said when I went to her with her problem. It was just a super insensitive comment that she made, like, "I'm sorry, I can't turn off my feelings like that." That was in freshman year and that was just such a scarring experience. And I don't think I'm ever going to her again because of that, because, you know, of the comments she made. And I know so many other students who've experienced the same exact situation where administration gaslights and refuses to find an actual solution. And that's quite sad and disturbing. So another example is regarding my brother. He wears a turban and he faces such harsh religious intolerance all the time, even though he's just 10. He comes home crying, sick, scared of school, unable to complete his work because of it. His teacher dismisses it time and time again until he just gave up on telling her. Do you realize how harping that is for an older sister? See their younger sister like struggle because of this? And that's not even fully addressing the incompetency of some administrators. Some other larger events that took place did not receive any strict consequences. For example, a student posted a TikTok, you know, that, you know, had them, you know, saying that George Floyd deserved it, that he said that, you know, black people deserve what they got, which is so disturbing and disgusting. And he just had to say an apology and he's still on the football team. He's still, you know, participating in every school activity. And there's just no backlash against that other than, you know, public outrage. And some other incidences include Muslim students being called terrorists because, well, they practice a different religion. And that's just not acceptable. You know, surrounding counties have taken initiatives towards repairing these problems. And I think it's time for us to do that, too. I know we have a diversity promise. And I know we're trying, but it's honestly pretty performative at this point because I don't see a difference. People still being treated the same way. And and this is, I know what you guys are like discussing. Like, I know the budget's part of the problem, but that's not that I don't think a budget should be, you know, prioritized over the students' experience in our schools. Yeah, I understand that you guys are trying. You're making an equity based, you know, curriculum. But like, that's in high school. I don't think my brother is learning anything and he's in elementary school. The students in elementary school are already becoming so hateful towards their peers. And this is causing so many incidences not being reported to administrators because it's so like common now. It's so normalized. I think that we should have like a set protocol and how we should be dealing with these appalling events. We're a primarily white school and I get it. It's like, that's what we are. And but we should also be promoting diversity by, you know, standing up for them. You have to like actually take a step for equality. You can't just say, oh, yeah, we have diversity promise. I want to see action and that's about reflecting your values and your actions, reflecting your priorities in your budget and your committees and working for change that you guys said you wouldn't be doing. You know, it should be in our entire community talking about this, but it's not. It's, I know it's simmered down a bit since June. I've been coming to every single meeting since then and I just want to be appreciated. I want to feel safe. I want to be acknowledged in our schools, but I'm not. I'm not. And I think it's absolutely necessary as human beings, for all of us to be together, to be treated equally. So, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
Alan Tempesku, 41 Gibbs, a drive. I appreciate the Google Meet committee update that was provided after I asked my question earlier and that the Google Classroom issue is being fixed or has been fixed. That is helpful. But I just want to clarify, my question specifically for Dr. Tobek on this topic relates to whether the district can have some sort of a backup plan that would immediately go into place if such a Google Classroom link problem was to occur again. In other words, what is our Plan B? That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Next caller?
Hi, my name is Katie Cluck, 34 Hellcrash Drive. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, cool. I just wanted to thank you so much for the COVID-19 breakdown. Even though I'm no longer in the high school, I thought it was very informative, especially explaining what's going on in our entire community at large. So I just wanted to thank you for that and all the work you've been doing with COVID-19 and diversity, equity and inclusion. I just want to voice my support for just keep going with different plans and initiatives and starting making sure that it's not just at the high school level, but also at younger levels. Thank you so much and really thank you for everything you've been doing. You've been working really hard.
Thank you. We have one more?
Hello?
Hello, you're on.
Hi, Samantha Morgan. I'm a lifelong Wayne resident and also a teacher at Wayne Hills High School. I just wanted to call in and kind of express my concern about the safety of staff and students. Right now, only sending, keeping Wayne Valley out of the school. It's great for Wayne Valley, but there's a lot of intermingling. I'm concerned with the amount of staffing issues we've been having, especially at Hills. And I'm also concerned if custodial staff's going to be out. Will our cleaning also suffer? It just seems with the saying that contact tracing is near impossible at this point. What are we really pushing for, for three days in person, for each cohort, for each kid? It kind of seems like we're risking a lot when we could maybe just go back on the 19th and hopefully be in a better situation then. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Seeing no one? Can we get a mover? Mr. Pavlak, Mr. Giordano? Okay, we have several questions. Dr. Tobek, do you care to address those?
I'd be happy to address them, but the one question that carried over from a number of callers has to do with our technology situation. And so, Dr. Burchard, I was wondering if you could just clarify exactly the circumstances that the district faced. And while he's gathering his thoughts, I would like to say that we do have a backup plan. The backup plan is essentially to go to Zoom. So we do maintain a Zoom account. And so it is possible for teachers to quickly and easily go to our Zoom account and deliver the lessons that way. Dr. Burchard, are you ready?
Thank you, Dr. Tobek. As I mentioned in the committee report, one of the servers that we use to communicate with Google unfortunately had an equipment failure and did not send all the proper permissions to Google for access to Google Meet, which is why students and staff were still able to access Google Mail, Google Classroom and all the other suite tools that Google offers. Just unfortunately, the information that's sent to use Google Meet was not sent. We work with our partners at Google and are working to resolve it and expect that it'll be working tomorrow morning. Dr. Tobek, as you mentioned, we did put in place a backup plan and staff members were, have the ability to use Zoom. And I know many took that opportunity to do their lessons using Zoom. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Dr. Burchard.
You're welcome.
So at this point, what I'd like to do is actually turn over some of the questions to Mrs. Reichman. So at this point, would you take over for some of the questions that the public asked?
Yes. The first caller was Mr. Dardia. He asked three questions. One was about vaccine. I guess there were a few parts to it. You enquired about when will it be required for, will it be required for students? Will it be required for staff? And what is the path that districts need to see vaccines are carried out? So I think right now we're anticipating that there will be FDA approval for a vaccine. But, you know, what we know right now is that the Department of Health is working with the state and the local government agencies to plan for distribution. We do not at this time know what the distribution looks like and when our teachers, what class of employees or what category will filter into. So we're really in a holding pattern. We have to wait on guidance to see what the distribution will look like. As soon as that becomes available, we'll have a better idea to see what legislation is proposed. And then we'll start having discussions here. You also asked about if we were to be in a situation where we need to go fully remote as a district, what staff might be furloughed. At this point, we're really operating in real time, minute to minute. We have a number of open documents where administrators are entering in information about staff that may be out at any given time as they receive new information. And it comes in daily throughout the day and throughout the evening. And what we're doing is looking, as Dr. Tobek indicated earlier, at creative solutions for doing everything possible to keep our doors open. This week, the focus was really on looking at anybody who hasn't, meets the criteria to be eligible for a sub certification and then seeking out employees who have an interest in seeking that certification and working with them to facilitate that. This way, we have other people who are available and can work with us to cover classrooms if we have more teachers who need to quarantine and be remote. As far as other categories of staff who would possibly, you know, we'd need to have a discussion about furlough. That would be a discussion we'd have at a later date. We're not there yet. Mr. Tempesku, you asked about snow days, virtual days. Will they continue post pandemic? At this time, we don't know. The latest information that we have is that, and this was something that we just recently learned, was that now, this year, the Department of Education has approved snow days to be virtual. We're in a position where we can continue to facilitate and deliver instruction, but nothing has been decided or communicated yet about next year. I think the Google Classroom issues, Dr. Burchard addressed, but just to echo what Dr. Tobek added, we do maintain our Zoom subscription. All of the resources and training was offered to teachers, so they are familiar and they have been directed to use it as a backup. I believe Mr. Tempesku also asked about the vaccination, which I shared my comments in response to Mr. Dardia. And the next question came from Mrs. Franklin. You asked, why are so many staff quarantining and what is the criteria? Each situation becomes available to us or brought to our attention. We look at it individually. Each situation is considered by our nursing supervisor. We have an assistant director, Dr. Tobek, myself and in consultation with Dr. Goldberg and the Department of Health. So there are criteria that are set by the Department of Health. There is a great deal of guidance that has been offered to us by Dr. Goldberg. And again, it's just looking at the criteria that we set to maintain the safest environment in our school and what the Department of Health deems as being the safest for our staff and protecting students and just limiting any future threat of the infection. So again, each situation is looked at individually and differently. And as we have more information provided by their doctors and improved health, we look at ways for offering and partnering with teachers to teach remotely if they can't be in school and arranging for coverage so that we can maintain the classroom sessions.
One question from Mrs. Franklin had to do about the cases that may or may be inside or outside of school, whether it is their transmission in the school. Okay? So just very quickly, in a lot of cases, that is very difficult to tell because ultimately teachers are with, you know, with other people outside of school. What we believe, like I said, is based on everything that we have in the districts. And as far as our structure, we do believe that most cases that we face are more than likely from outside of school. We do, we do become aware of exposures that, you know, teachers have and eventually sometimes they, they wind up being positive. A lot of that is outside of school. And so that's for the most part, but is it possible to prove that 100%? No. Is there transmission in school? It could be. Like I said, we do have this case at Wayne Valley and that situation is a little more serious when compared to the rest of the district because of the numbers, right? That's a, it's a pretty significant number of students and staff members that we have to be concerned about there. And so that, that issue really is being evaluated by the Department of Health at the state level. And so we might find out more about, you know, what they see as transmission in school, not in school. So we'll, we'll report that at our next board meeting if we have an answer.
Okay. There's an echo if everyone doesn't mute. Mr. Dardia asked about the Wednesdays and when, or if we would go to full days. I don't think that was addressed.
You can respond to that. Yes. Thank you. Yeah, so regarding the Wednesdays, my apologies, I missed that one. On Wednesdays, teachers at the elementary level have gone back to live streaming, which is something that we were striving to do once we had all the technology in place and everybody was equipped with the tools that they needed to continue with that. Once the school day ends, teachers are now working with small groups of students to offer remediation, intervention, enrichment and reading groups. So that is the reason why they are not offering office hours on Wednesday. We do have an obligation to identify any achievement gaps and meet the needs of students who do require some enrichment and that is a designated time for that. The second part of the question.
When will we return to full days as opposed to minimal, which you know the answer, but please?
So that is something we're still operating in phase one. Once we, after January 19th, we're going to revisit the plan for phase two. But again, it'll be based on the circumstances at the time, but that is part of phase two.
Okay, thank you. And I just have a concern with one caller. Only because when someone reports bullying to us, we're compelled to act. And this young lady has reported bullying to us of her 10-year-old brother. So I would very much like to ask you to pursue that and see that it's addressed. Okay, well, I just want to make sure that she knows that that is our policy. And ignoring bullying of any sort is not an option. Okay, so thank you for alerting us to that and hopefully we can have some teachable moment in that school with your brother. Okay, well, I want to thank the staff, obviously, for the terrific job we've done this evening and all the information. And I'm not sure if the public recognizes it, but quite a bit of work goes into updating us, updating you and staying on top of the situation and trying to keep our schools open. We're doing the best we can. And we understand the importance of in-person instruction, but we also understand the importance of safety. So unfortunately, there may be some surprises between now and the holidays. Hopefully you can have your childcare back up, your Plan B, and we'll get through this. Does anyone have any final comments or old business, new business? Oh, sorry, Mr. Baba. I see you there.
Actually, it really isn't board business, but I just want to congratulate Mr. Pavlak because tomorrow will be his last day of 34 years of service to the Wayne Police Department. And we thank you. I've known Don for a long time and before he was a cop, as a matter of fact. He was a student teacher at Wayne Hills when I was there. So I just want to say thank you. And I appreciate all the things that you've done. So congratulations. And if I could walk, I would be there tomorrow, but I can't at the moment. So good luck tomorrow. Enjoy it.
Thank you.
Just for the record, did Mr. Baba call Mr. Pavlak his history teacher?
Well, since you normally play for the clapout, Mr. Pavlak, who's going to play for you? I hope you have someone there.
I think there'll be a few people.
Wonderful. I'm happy to hear that. There should be a very large contingent of pipes and drums for you. And congratulations on your retirement. Anyone else? Okay, well, then I'll take a Okay, well, then I'll take a mover. Mr. Pavlak, Mr. Giordano? Okay, second was Mr. Giordano. Thank you and good evening.